Right, good evening, welcome to the February ninth Board of Selectmen's meeting. The meeting is being audio and video recorded. If you do stand, judge, and pledge your flag.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a ratification of Gina Wasden for the Finance Committee Part-Time Secretary.
So unfortunately she could not attend this evening, but I, both me and Janice Fox has been having to view for a secretarial position, I think should be an asset to the Finance Committee. And I'm just looking for the board to ratify her employment this evening.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve that ratification?
So moved, second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are all the spots open, or I mean filled on Finance Committee?
Yes.
Yes, good, okay, thanks.
Great, um, the Capital Budget Committee is coming up in March, so we need a representative from the Board of Selectmen, the meetings are typically, I think they're both in March, typically during the week, during the day, around two o'clock. I've done it the past couple of years, I'm glad to do it again, but if someone else feels strongly about doing it, that is also fine.
I wouldn't mind doing it.
I don't want to do it. It's, it's during the daytime and I work, so it makes it difficult, um, so.
Alright, that's fine, I'm fine if you want to do it.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, so is there a motion?
Can I make a motion for myself?
Yeah, yeah.
I move to appoint myself to the Capital Budget Committee?
Is there a second?
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, um, David, do you want to do the, those budgets?
So I'll do all the eight o'clock hearings, um, I'll go through them fairly quick, almost every single one is either a small budget, whether it's very minimal increases. The town accountant budget thirteen fifty is up just under two percent, again it's all driven just by contractual increases. Fifteen ten town council is level funded at eighty-seven thousand. Fifty-four thirty is up just a little over one percent, again the only real increase in there is contractual with the union employee. Cable Committee TV, fifteen sixty, that's level funded at eleven hundred dollars. Planning Board is up one point six percent, up four hundred dollars, again just chiefly because of the, um, the two percent raise to the secretary. Seventeen sixty, which is Board of Appeals, one point seven percent, again same increase, a hundred dollars. Eighteen fifty Rent Control Board, eighty-three dollar increase, but that's a one point eight percent increase, but again it's just the two percent for the secretary. The ADA Committee is level funded at five hundred, and the Municipal Building Needs Committee is level funded at fourteen hundred eighty-six dollars.
Okay, anyone have any questions or comments on those?
No.
Do you want to do your time history as a part table?
Sure, so just a couple of quick updates, um, on PFAS, the letter did just go out, we received it along with everybody else in town, just notifying everybody where we are on the quarterly rate, um, you can see plus or minus, we're right around where the, the, uh, the compliance level is, um, so that is going out, I know the water commissioners will be here tonight, so if there's any specific questions, I know that they'll be able to answer them, um, but that letter did go out for everybody's knowledge. And then after that is the Plymouth County Mosquito Control Project budget, uh, we get charged this as part of our cherry sheets, they notified us that the increase will be one point nine two percent, around seventeen hundred dollars, so that gets charged to us through the cherry sheets, so remember last week when I said the cherry sheets come out and these will move, this budget obviously hasn't been presented yet to the legislature, so it's only a seventeen hundred dollar increase, but that's not reflected in those cherry sheet costs yet, and again, we know that that always becomes a moving target, um, but that's obviously so that way they can spray for mosquito control during the summer, um, really that's it for my, um, for my updates this week.
And David, this service is also available to residents on request too, I believe, that a resident could call or send in, I believe send an email, I'm not sure, and ask to have their area done?
That is absolutely correct, so we do have some residents every year that does call and make those calls and requests, and they will come out and they will spray that area. Um, if there is a large, excuse me, I'll just, um, I want to show you one thing. So this here is what all twenty-seven communities individually being charged with their respective increases, you could see us at the bottom at a one point nine two percent, seventeen dollar increase, that's because for the most part, our residents really don't call a lot and asking, but when you see other large increases, because they're all supposed to be the same on a per capita basis, but when you see, for example, Plymouth at thirteen and a half percent, that's because those residents or that town is calling out more often, so therefore they're filling it into the next budget. So, um, so we have had in the past, we've had some four, five percents, and that always is indicative of the fact that people are making those calls.
Is this something that maybe we can schedule to put on the Facebook page when we get towards the summer months, so that residents are aware it's available?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is there any motion for a brief recess?
So moved, second?
On favor?
Aye.
Alright, whenever you're ready, so, um, yeah, do you just want to start with any changes?
Yes, we have contractual changes for a union worker, and also the biggest change is an added office employee. We're finding that our outreach department is, I don't want to say busting at the seams, but we have had more walk-in and phone call need for that department, and therefore it's filling into, Fran is doing a lot of outreach work to help her out, we also have a volunteer coming in to help out, but it just doesn't seem to be enough, and what's happening is a lot of it's landing on me and a lot of it's landing on Connie, my assistant, so I'm thinking with the restructure, we, we may need to have somebody come in and help us out, especially with the transportation end of things, you know, scheduling, some scheduling of programs and making sure it's on the calendar and all that's taken care of, there are a few things that I have. I'd like to take the Meals on Wheels program off of Connie's desk, because Connie inherited that when Ariel passed away, and at the time we didn't have anybody else to take it, and that should be in the outreach department, um, it, it takes up a lot of her time away from the general things that she needs to do is filing and, and things like that for the administrative office. So the new person would take care of all the scheduling of van usage, um, they would make sure the phones and meet and greet clients record daily diapath and reservations, and coordinate the van for program usage, and accurate count on phone calls et cetera, submit monthly reports to me, and other duties as determined by the director. Also, there could be some help with press releases and getting word out there of everything we're doing, and some help with the newsletter. That's my proposal. I'm estimating the hours it would take, it may take less, I may get somebody there that's perfect for it, but can't work within twenty hours a week, and I think if we can make that work, we can make that work, but I have it, I have it listed here for thirty.
So my, just some thought, I think if you go over nineteen and a half, then you're looking at benefits too.
Yes.
Um, so my, my, I know it's not time to really get into these budgets, but I don't know if it's maybe something you want to think about and see if you could fit it into a nineteen and a half, you'll start there, see how it goes. Um, have you had a significant increase in clients or their needs because of COVID?
Not necessarily all COVID, it just seems that the baby boomers, children are turning sixty.
I think, I think a lot of them are retiring too, they're done.
Absolutely, absolutely, and so there's a lot of foot traffic with that, and there's a lot of families, sons and daughters, that come in to help their parents, and we've seen a lot of that because their parents are becoming older and don't quite know the answers and what to do. We, we also are getting a lot more distress calls for orders, my Meals on Wheels would be people have probably in some dire situations to us that they see when they deliver the meals, and so working with OCS and the Police Department, we've been able to help some of these folks out, some of them I know have had to bring down their homes, and we have to find another one. So there's a lot going on out there that isn't COVID-related that we just didn't expect.
And I'm not sure a lot of people know that councils on aging all across the state are a great resource for when seniors are getting ready to transition from regular insurance to Medicare, and most healthcare facilities or healthcare professionals will refer the seniors directly to a council on aging to get the information, because they deal with it every day, um, and there are so many scams out there, advertisements that they're Medicare supplements and that they're really not.
A lot of our phone calls are frightened seniors that look, I get them on my phone, one of them says, "Congratulations Louis, you've won a prize, just open this email and give us a call." Well, I'm not Louis, but this Marilyn knows that, I'm not going to open that email, and so we have a lot of advice for our seniors, and as frequently as I can, I could put them new ones in the newsletter, and we have our Police Department that's working with us on scams, since I've joined Triad, um, they're very anxious to do programs for our seniors regarding scams and what to watch out for, the Sheriff's Department is also there doing programs for us.
They do a lot of good work.
Well, thank you, um, enjoying your job is helpful, and we're all, everybody in that office is involved in the outreach, the Meals on Wheels drivers, the kitchen staff, everybody's involved in outreach, we, um, we deliver some of our meals to people that are regulars that just can't get out for one reason or another, so we're always doing that as our top priority, but when it takes over grant writing and budget time, I know that's seasonal, but there are things that take precedence sometimes in the administrative end of the departments that we just can't get to in a timely manner. I, for the first time since I've been doing this, I was late, almost late with my budget, I didn't sleep at night, believe me. No extensions for me, I wanted on time.
Marilyn, can I ask a few questions?
Of course.
It says that you're adding a full-time position, and then further down it says you're down to one van, does that mean you're going to be decreasing the number of hours needed for van operation?
No, right now, we've had to take a van off the road.
Okay.
A manifold failed, and I guess in this van, it's not one you can go into the engine and lift the engine out and get to the manifold, you have to go from underneath, and I have it right now, I've asked Sean to have it, oh, not Sean, but Tom to take it to wherever he does business with, to see if they could look it all over and decide what the cost would be to fix it, but we are down to one van at this point, um, and that one, unfortunately, the windows and doors are leaking, that is the dial-a-bat van that we have on Grant, um, and we're working on maybe having that one replaced, but we're trying to decide in conversation, trying to decide if we wanted to have that and have the restrictions that are involved with that in transporting, or do we want to do something different? Right now we're on the fence, the van, the dial-a-bat van runs fine, mechanically it runs beautifully, but it's just, this, from the summertime and all the times that it was sitting, we tried to run it at least three times a week, but it sat for a long time and it got very lofty and mildewy with the rain coming in.
Okay, so you're down to one, do you anticipate running two vans this coming?
At some, at some time, because right now, if we only, we only get one, we can't do special programming, because one's on the road, um, carrying clients to and from grocery stores and to us for lunch and back home, doctor's appointments, then we want something that we can take them to a restaurant and a, and a show in Newport, and right now we wouldn't be able to do that, and that's of course, we're in a good, not a good spot, we're in a terrible spot because of COVID, but on the other hand, we don't need it right now because we're not doing that types of programming.
Okay, um, are you planning to replace the van, or what is your plan, what's your long-term plan with the vans?
Once we find out what's, what's wrong with the one we own, then we'll determine that, I think that, we'd love to have a new van, this one, this one is a lot of miles on it, hours, it has a lot of miles on it, and I think it's run its course, it's probably ten years old, and that's a long life for it.
Are there grant programs available right now?
The dial-a-bat is a grant, that's the only one I'm aware of, and I have been checking that out as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I just want to go through the other items, because I guess there were a lot of small changes.
Which items are you talking about, like the electricity, that went up a thousand?
Yeah, yeah, if you just want to keep going down the list of, of the questions.
If the girl remembered her glasses, she'd be very helpful.
Got him. Okay, so electricity? Looks like that one up a thousand?
Well, in twenty, twenty-one, okay, so.
But it doesn't look like you'd spent all that much.
That goes between April and, and to July, with the air conditioning, that'll, that'll pick up.
What's the next one, property maintenance, janitorial, went down thirty-five hundred?
Yes, we cut back to one cleaning a week during COVID because we weren't in the building that much with, with clients and having programming, now that it's picking up again, especially during rock solid season and, and just a lot more activity going on in there, we'll be heading back to the two a month, and that'll be continuous.
So the next change is down five hundred dollars in telephone, is that right?
That has gone down for a lot.
Is that a landline, or like?
Landline.
Oh, look at that.
I would get, we make a lot of calls, we don't understand, but we don't do a lot of out-of-town calls, we don't do a lot of costly calls.
The next one, three hundred dollars went up, office supplies, but it looks like that's in line with their spending, yeah. The next one says down to one van, seven hundred dollars, uh, should decrease, so it looks like you decrease the gasoline?
Yes.
And the next one is a twenty-two hundred dollar increase in dues and meetings.
Yes, I have, uh, we, we changed our database from, we used to be Coats, um, and the gentleman that was doing Coats for us, that developed it and maintained it for us, decided to go sailing, and sailed off into the sunset, and we haven't been able to reach him since.
My say will come true.
But yeah, yeah, that's one way to retire, and, um, and he didn't tell any of the COAs that he was doing this, he just, I guess I'm done, but there's, there was a system out there called My Senior Center, um, very much recommended by other COAs all across Massachusetts, and so we contacted them, and we had that, um, in place in October twenty-twenty, so we've had it about a year and a half, a little, we, a little more than a year, and, um, that comes with an eighteen hundred dollar a year need, and it's big.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments?
No, looks good, makes sense.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Water Department?
Come on, Art, you can come on up too, don't, don't be afraid of me.
By all means, please.
Alright, whoever you're ready, William.
Alright, do you have any questions, or you just want me to go through the lines that changed?
Just go through the lines that changed.
Alright, so, uh, five one one one, appointed official, that's two people now, so that's why you see a hundred and thirty-one point four five percent.
Why is it two people?
I've moved the GIS person into that because it looks like it's a permanent position, I'm actually not sure what line she's being funded out of this year, but so far I'm above water, so.
And the hours increased, right, as we discussed a few months ago?
Yes, I, I just ask her what to put in and that's it.
We should probably ask for another line for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that would be better.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
I know there was an issue with lines, but there are lines that they can take out of my budget down at the bottom, so.
Well, I think it was just saying, insert a line.
Yeah, I don't, I guess it isn't that easy, the, the numbers are associated with something, I, you know, I don't know the greater scheme of things.
Nah, it's like make up an hour.
I just remember when we were gonna break out the loans, that that became an issue, there were X amount, but the space.
Yeah, that's, I don't want to check into that, it shouldn't be an issue.
So, we could get to that next year, I mean, this year.
We've only increased the hours, she was on here before.
Right.
So where was she before?
I'm, I think she's in the labor pool.
Yeah, yeah, that line there should be for the appointed official, so I'll talk to the town accountant, we'll, we'll figure something out.
Okay.
Alright, um, the next one would be five one one, two clerical salaries, that's, um, two percent, but we have a new clerical, so. Um, office, let's see, labor, so we're budgeting for another new hire, we removed it a year back when everybody was cutting back, um, with the possibility of the plant being retrofitted, it needs more attention than we're technically giving to it, and if we have another plant come online, we're gonna need two people just to look at the plants themselves.
That was approved at one point, right?
Yeah, it was, but everybody was looking for zero or cut wherever you were, and, but we can't run without people, we have to have people.
How many do you have now, Wayne?
I have three.
And, but do you have three in an opening?
We're budgeted for four.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have the position open right now and posted?
It is posted, but it's, it's a technical position, and you can't, you need technical people, so it's just a matter of massage and the, the posting till we hit on the right person, and that's what we did last time, I mean, I posted for almost two years till we found our last candidate, and he is everything he was supposed to be, so it's just hanging on to him. It's not gonna be easy because everybody, there were like ninety-three other towns that failed PFAS, that means they're all gonna get treatment plants, um, they're regulate, they're gonna regulate manganese, so everybody's gonna have plants for that, licenses are very hard to get, you're, you really need almost a college degree to get through the licensing, so licenses will become worth a lot of money, I get cards regularly from other towns, and that, they want to grab you.
I was gonna say, why don't we poach, same idea.
Well, you can't, well, I have somebody, so I'm, he keeps asking, he works for a town where it has a crappy superintendent.
Perfect.
If I can, if I can get him, we'll see. Alright, uh, office manager is budgeted for a two percent rate, well, actually three percent, two percent is the cost of living and one percent for goals.
Wait, so, um.
Yeah, wait, can we go back up one to labor?
Oh, labor.
Actually, I could show a different one.
Oh, sorry.
On temporary salaries, so I know that one's a zero increase, what's that for?
So I'm envisioning, I haven't sprung this on the commissioners yet, but we had, um, a DPW guy retire this year, or the past year, and we do a lot of lawn mowing ourselves, so it takes away from what else we can do, we have a lot of land, so if I can hire somebody in his temporary salaries, he'd fit in there, I've used it in the past as the GIS person, wherever we can find a niche, or I can get somebody to fill in to take the load off of some of us.
So you're talking outsourcing, essentially, that landscape?
Yes, yep.
Who does it now?
We do it, we try to squeeze it in, it gets out of hand, so it's, it's, becomes a pain when you're trying to mow a hayfield with a finished mower, we're not really set up for mowing, but it has to be done, appearance is everything, if somebody comes in and they see unkempt, you know, they're gonna think, should I drink the water?
Is there a reason the water department does it and not the DPW, or am I walking into a landmine?
I don't want to step into that, but I guess there was an agreement long ago when they reneged or whatever.
So there's history, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, alright. Did you have a question, Mary?
Yeah, I did, I'm so sorry, going back to five one one three labor, um, you're budgeting for, you said this was for four labors, you were already budgeted?
So it's five, so it's.
So you're adding on top of the one you already had?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't catch that the first time, so you're, you have a position posted now and you're looking to post another one?
So I'll take whatever, we're coming up to July, so if I can find a candidate and we'll see what we can do, but yes, I'm gonna be looking to fill two spots.
So you're budgeted for four, and now you're adding one position?
And I added in a fifth, yes.
In nineteen seventy-six, before we had any of the treatment plants, we had four, four labors, so right now we have less labors than we had in nineteen seventy-six, and we didn't even have any treatment plants.
Oh, it makes sense, I just wanted to make sure it's clear on it, thank you.
Yep, I mean technically we do about forty-five digs a year, this past year, we just didn't have time, so, didn't mean we didn't not do anything, but most of our time was spent in the treatment plants themselves.
Okay, I want to keep going.
Alright. So I'll start at the office manager again, so she's budgeted for a three percent raise, two percent is the cost of living, and one percent is for goals. Longevity, well, that's just going up as you have people.
Is that part of the union, you get goals?
She's not in.
And a percentage, oh, it's not a union?
No, that's not a union position.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Um, the next few lines are the towns' lines, and then eventually they'll get filled in, I est, overestimated them just to make sure that I cover whatever actually comes along, you never know what's gonna go up.
So David, do you populate those after?
I do, yeah, so once I get everything back from the insurance companies.
So allowance and stipends, fifty-one ninety, um, that's, if I can poach somebody who has licenses, well, then you gotta pay them for the licenses, we're always trying.
So are any of those increases attributable to increased stipends amongst the existing staff?
No, because the unit, the contract is set for this coming year.
Okay, so the increase is just based on two new hires?
Right, that and the people we have hopefully increasing their licenses.
Well, shouldn't the increase be for one additional person, weren't you already budgeted for four people?
Yes, but he didn't, he had intermediate licenses.
Wait, your budget request last year should have covered four people, right?
Yes.
So we're just increasing for one person?
Right, but I'm also upping them, if this person decides to jump ship and he has a grade four licenser, I, I have no idea until he comes, but if I can find somebody, then you want to be able to pay them for the license.
How much would it be for just that one additional person, disregarding the additional license that may come up?
So.
Approximately.
Depending upon, I think it could be seven thousand dollars.
Okay, I didn't know how big of a difference we were talking, thank you.
Alright, so my next increase would be all the way down, uh, Equipment Repairs and Maintenance, fifty-two forty-three, um, my car, you see it everywhere, my cars are going up, my pumps are going through the roof, the price, I'm actually, I, I've been backordered since November for something that's gonna ship in a couple of days, we're having supply chain issues, so I try to keep more on stock. Um, the next one would be Preventive Maintenance, fifty-two forty-nine, that's, once again, that's my pumps and parts, it's, it's gone through the roof, uh, my next increase would be for Engineering Services, fifty-three hundred, so when the PFAS went over. So, when the PFAS went over, we got hit with a non, a non, a non, which requires an engineering service. To, in a stamp to reply back to DEP. We didn't have enough in our engineering line to cover that, so in the future, if something happens, I need to be able to cover that.
And it costs ten thousand?
It can, it depends upon what happens, I can't tell you at any given time what we might, or may not get hit with.
Okay, but you haven't spent anything?
They haven't billed us yet for it.
Okay.
Because they knew we were.
It's colored.
Yeah.
Bills on the mail.
All right, the next one is data processing, that's, you know, it's doing a quarterly bills that, you know, it's outsourced, it's gone up also. Um, network technology, that's the town. Uh, next one, laboratory services, I use three labs, all three of them have sent me, um, notices that their prices are going through the roof. And even my monthly PFAS samples have jumped almost a hundred and fifty dollars in the short time that we've been doing them.
So is this increase, the, the increase in the number of tests, or the increase in the cost of the test?
Well, we're, we're, both, but all of it.
Okay. What, how did you come up with the figure nine thousand?
So I looked at the amount that the, the PFAS test, and then, then I got notices from all of the labs that they were going up, I. I can't tell you off the top of my head.
All right, I just thought it was a pretty round number, a ninety percent increase, so.
I think it was told early on when I started doing this, don't have round numbers, they don't like it when you see round numbers.
So why'd you do it?
I like round numbers, I'm sorry, I just like round numbers. I'll make sure in it there'll be nines and fives. All right, so my next one is, that's internet connection, I don't control that, but we went down on the other side of it.
What's that one, oh, network equipment?
Yeah, well, I really don't have it, I have a dead server sitting in the back room.
You have a what?
A server.
Oh, a dead server?
Well, I don't think it's dead yet, but I thought he was pushing everything up online, I have to reboot it every now and then. Yeah, because we're, um, it takes too long, we're separated from the rest of the town, the rest of the town is all fed by the fiber optics. We don't, the fiber doesn't reach to us, so we don't have lightning fast, we connect to Comcast through the town, everything comes to us, we go back to the town to certify.
So it's like my home, it's really slow.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry Comcast.
All right, so my telephone. We approached the line last year, we had nine thousand, we spent eighty-nine, so it's going up to just stay above it. It's been going up every year, unfortunately. Uh, the next one is office supplies, we spent twenty-one thousand last year, and I was only budgeted for sixteen. So I'm just raising it up above what we spent last year, because we're not, we're actually doing more this year, sending out more notices, so it, hopefully I cover it. Tools and supplies, um, once again, nothing's getting any cheaper, I wish it was. Even when it's made out of plastic, it's not, I've got plastic fittings that cost me a hundred bucks. Uh, pipes, fittings, and meters, I've exceeded that line also, I spent forty-one thousand last year, and I was only budgeted for twenty-eight. Uh, the no lead brass costs a lot more than regular brass.
Are, are you on a regular meter replacement?
Uh, we're not due for meter replacement for, I wanna say twenty-two.
So that's gonna be another huge project over the course of a year again, or?
So I'll, I'll discuss it with the commissioners when the time comes, I'd like to spread it out over five years, we wanna keep the meters running, so. Their average life is, for a meter is fifteen to twenty years, so if we start at fifteen, the bulk of the meters, because the residents wouldn't let us in. Happen more towards the end, but I'd like to spread it, if we keep it in-house, it keeps our costs down. But, once again, we're X amount of people, so if we spread it out over five years, then we should be able to do it in-house and keep all the costs down.
Still going through badger?
Yes, well, we'll, at the time, we'll look at the meters, but they've served us well, it's a dual register meter, it has the electronic side, plus it has the mechanical register. Can't go wrong, if something goes wrong with the electronics, well, the mechanical's there.
Seems to be working.
Uh, fleet inspection, that's the town, town, uh, tank inspection. Uh, the last quote I got from my tank inspection was above the ten thou, or the ninety-five hundred that I was budgeted for, it actually came in at like ten-five. So that was a while back, so that's why you see it increased to eleven thousand.
How come, uh, it doesn't show you spending any of that money just yet?
Because I, so they want specifics when they go into, they can inspect the tank while it's online, because they go in clean. But they require the tank to be dropped down, so we're having technical issues with our tanks, and we have an engineering that's gonna be done to that. So I can't let them in until I can make sure that I, they work, I can do what they want for a level in the tank and still serve the town. So sometime in the spring, I might bring them in, but I'm not gonna bring them in right now when it's all icy.
How often does it have to be inspected?
So the DEP wants it like every three years, I try to stretch it off, because the tanks are all, they were painted not too long ago, twenty-fourteen and twenty-sixteen. And, uh, I've already had the Walnut Street tank inspected, I forget how many years in that is, but, so I'm on top of it, but they're. They're really clean when you go in, the Walnut Street tank, I wanna say was like five or six years out, and it still looked like day one inside. It's the exteriors that take the beating, the interiors are fine.
Those ta, uh, paint, tank paintings, is that like every fifteen years, is that their?
So they, like twenty years, I, I think they got more out of it, it's very expensive. With the big tank is now de-letted, so the next time it should be a little less than one point four million dollars. Because the little tank was sick, uh, like five hundred and eighty thousand. But so, big tank is much bigger.
Last as long now, they took the lead out of the paint.
It won't last as long.
Can I just get clarification on one thing you said, you said it should be inspected every three years?
Yeah, well, the DEP is always, but we inspect them out externally, that, so that.
All right, just makes me nervous, I haven't seen it spent in three, at least three years.
Yeah, we go back to the Walnut, because I try to stretch it out, because I.
I don't know, anything that says inspection makes me nervous, I feel like that should be happening.
Yeah, it's not, they're looking, and when they've gone in, there's not that much sediment. If I, if they go in and I see a lot of sediment, then I'll make a note, and then we'll speed up the next one, but. There's not, as part of the inspection, they'll remove like three feet of sediment above that, but on the Walnut Street tank, there wasn't, there was nothing for sediment.
I mean it in the nicest way, I don't really understand what you just said, but inspection makes me nervous, and if it should be done.
Yeah. The tanks were all just done and inspected internally when they were painted, there's nothing. Even though, yeah, there's, it's not, it's.
You kinda get what I'm getting at, though, right?
Yeah, I can, I'll show you the video when they go in, you'll see the.
No, I, I believe you, but if there's certain things that are supposed to be done, and it's recommended every three years, and you're budgeted for it, I think we should be doing it.
Yeah. Right. Yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
Yep.
All right, and then just some capital items coming up?
Uh, yep, so the last, we'll be making the last payment on the iron removal plant. And, uh, the truck, but, uh, trucks are, are, we've gotta replace that dump truck, so we're, every three years, you're gonna see us come up. So that truck line will just renew next year, probably expensiver, because big truck is more money.
Expensiver?
Yeah, you're like, I mean, look, you're gonna.
I like it.
I'll put in a comma and a semicolon.
I understood it.
We all did, it was good.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
Um.
Overall, two point nine.
I don't really have a question on the budget, but I do have a question, um, are we still under the bottled water advisory, is that what they call it?
So I don't, technically, I don't think we have to, we've been two quarters in a row under the PFAS numbers. We changed, I changed what we were doing with the plant, it seemed to have brought the numbers down, so. I still offer the water, people are still coming, um, except if we get snow on the roof again, I'm gonna have to shut it down, because the. We have a low pitch, and the snow likes to creep its way off and drop down on people.
You don't want anyone standing there.
Employees are expendable, but the public will sue us.
No, they're not, you can't, you can't hire them, so they're not expendable, but does that mean, does that mean we're officially off of it? Or do you need to get something from DEP that says?
No, once we drop under, you could, but I'm not gonna, until I see it's down, they, they could still come and get it, we're under the twenty.
Yeah.
So.
But I think, I think what, what I'd encourage you to do is maybe get something on the Facebook page that, you know, it's, uh, on the, or on the town's page, that it's.
Well, we post up there, the, the very same things you get, that before you even, or my commissioners see it.
Right.
I have her posting it up on our PFAS webpage, the numbers for the month.
Yeah, but you need to dig in to find that, what you really need is just a simple statement that says we are no longer under the advisory, however, you can still come and get water if you want.
I can put a big flashing banner on the, the town's webpage, but it looks bad when it's over, and.
Yeah. Some. Yeah, but, but, you know, it, uh, the, the information you're posting is good, all the numbers and everything, but some folks don't need the detail, they just wanna know, can I drink my water now?
Right. Well, that's also, but it's still PFAS, there, there's more PFAS in everybody's house, but.
Yeah.
We're regulating the water, so it's, um.
Right, if you could do, if you could do something simple, that would be greatly appreciated.
Don't we have to go a full, like, not the next quarter below before you can say, because we're still in the last quarter, even though we're running low?
Right, so our last quarter is a non, everybody got letters today, I believe they had everybody's mailboxes.
Okay, so we're not official yet then?
Right, because our last quarter, we had, um, it's done quarterly, so the last quarter was October, and November, December, I got that right.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
So October was a twenty-two, and then after that, they dropped down into, I wanna say, the low-nineteens.
So we're still under the advisory?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so it's not.
But our numbers have come down.
Right, okay, so it's premature for any kind of notice to say that we're out of the advisor, okay.
Right.
So no, no postings, Wayne?
All right.
All right, anything else? Thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm gonna.
All right, library.
I prepared little packets to, um. Put the infographic on top.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, um, the Sam exact budget that was submitted, I wasn't sure how small your font was, so I just made it bigger.
Thank you, Laura.
And, uh, before we dig into the numbers, I prepared a, a statement about the library, if I may.
Sure.
My name is Laura Williams, I'm the director of the West Bridgewater Public Library. Thank you to the selectman and Mr. Gagnon for having me come in tonight and the opportunity to present the library budget to you all. This budget was unanimously approved by the West Bridgewater Board of Trustees on January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. The Board of Trustees at the library include Chairman David Church, Vice Chairman Deborah Lancaster, Christine Alteieri, Scott Ames. Christopher Lawrence and Christine Roberts. Including myself, the library has eight staff members and two volunteer greeters. Our staff members include myself, Melanie Terrell, Beth Awalt, April Edlund, Gail McCarthy, Nanette Ryan, Michelle Sheehan, and Ashley Warren. Our volunteer greeters are Connie Fiorentino and Jack White. I would like to take the opportunity to publicly thank the trustees, staff members, and volunteers for helping to create. The dynamic, innovative, and always interesting West Bridgewater Public Library as a place that the community members know and truly love. These last few months have been a time of transition for the library, as we've said goodbye to Director Ellen Snowmbis. As she entered her retirement in November twenty-twenty-one, and I have left my role as assistant director in order to lead the library as director. At the end of January twenty-twenty-two, we welcomed Melanie Terrell as our new assistant director, and we are all very glad to have her aboard. To tell you more about the library, the library is open for forty-five hours a week over the course of six days. Including Tuesday and Wednesday evening hours, and we are open all year round on Saturdays. At the West Bridgewater Library, every patron can expect a warm, hospitable environment where they can browse for books, DVDs, magazines, music CDs, and audiobooks. They can also partake in a variety of free programming that we offer, as well as the paid service of having a passport process, if that is a service that they need. The West Bridgewater Public Library is a public institution that serves the entire community of West Bridgewater, from newborns to seniors. We have a successful partnership with the West Bridgewater Schools, including teacher Mr. Dave Peckrell, a sixth-grade English teacher from the Howard School. Who recently brought his students over to the library in eight different sections over the course of two days. So that myself and our Head of Youth Services, Nanette Ryan, could conduct book talks as a way of getting kids excited about reading and the new books that the library offers. We also will be working with Anna Mills, a Howard School Social Studies teacher, in order to host a Living Egyptian Museum. That features the hard work that her students put into the posters that bring the topic of ancient Egypt to life. In addition to collaborating with schools and students, our programming features adult programs, such as two adult book groups a month. Chapters, a fiction book group, and True Stories, a nonfiction book group, that also highlights audiobooks. The Dress a Girl Around the World Program is a program where library patrons can organize dress fabric. That will be sewn by other patrons in order to make dresses for girls in need, both locally and internationally. For calendar year twenty-twenty-one, two hundred and eighty-three people came into the library to either volunteer or drop off donated, oh, drop off completed dresses. The total number of dress kits checked out through the library was eight hundred and eighteen, which means eight hundred and eighteen dresses were made that were then donated to girls in need. The FAR program is hosted by the libraries Michelle Sheehan and Gail McCarthy, and is designed to meet the needs of adults with special needs. Michelle and Gail hold these FAR programs, which stands for Fun and Reading, twice a month at the library. And the West Bridgewater Public Library is recognized by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners as the only library in the state to offer ongoing programming to adults with special needs. These programs feature reading, crafts, movement and dancing, and encourages all patrons to join in on the fun. Adult Paint Nights, thus far, the library has hosted three adult paint nights, with two more being held on March first and March second. Revenue money from the Passport Acceptance Program has helped make these artistic pursuits possible. And these programs, unlike paint nights out at a studio or restaurant, remain free to its participants. After-school programs that have taken place in calendar year twenty-twenty-one include Life Size Candyland, an in-house pumpkin painting contest. Learning and playing games like zombie dice and splendor, painting afternoons, designing and decorating masquerade masks. And other classes for grades four and up, also made possible with passport revenue money. Additionally, an emphasis on after-school safety has been set in place this school year in order to make sure that all students that spend time in the library after school. Are contributing to an atmosphere of respect, equality, and civility. Routines and expectations have been set in place by myself and my staff in order to make sure all students have the opportunity. To be in a safe, collegial, and welcoming environment after school. For the youngest patrons, the library offers Sunset Storytime, an interactive read-along storytime for children's ages three to eight. That features music and movement, as well as a craft or activity. Leaping Littles, a program of music and movement for the younger little ones, ages two and a half to four. Little's Book Club is an interactive storytime for children's ages two and a half to four. Where each child receives a copy of the book to borrow during the program, and also features music and other activities. And Baby Sing and Play is a lapset program of music and movement for babies, for babies ages three to eighteen months. All of these programs foster growth and development in our youngest patrons, as well as a welcoming atmosphere for their parents to participate in programs with other parents, grandparents, and caregivers. The West Bridgewater Public Library will continue to bring all of these services and more to the public in FY twenty-twenty-three. And we look forward to continuing to be a beacon in the community where people of all ages and abilities can learn, thrive, create, and grow.
Thank you, we appreciate the background, we don't know if we get that during this, but it's good.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity, um, and I think the infographic speaks a lot too, but there's so many programs. That aren't represented in, in these statistics, that I felt that telling you more gave a rounder view of what it is we do at the library. Um, and as you can see in calendar year twenty-twenty-one, even though in, um, January and February, we're still close to the public. We still had close to twenty thousand, um, individual visits as visitors to the building. Over summer reading, below that, we had two hundred. Over summer reading, below that, we had two-hundred-and-fifty-nine summer reading participants over the seven weeks. Those are people who participated every week over seven weeks. Even when we don't have active reading going on, active challenges, we still have three-hundred-and-fifteen active Beanstack users. In the year twenty-twenty-one, people logged over three thousand books into Beanstack.
What's Beanstack?
Beanstack's a a tracking app that we use. It's like a reading incentive program, so you earn badges, you earn raffle tickets, and that's how we drive our summer reading program. It's a great way for the young ones to feel like they get an instant reward by getting a badge that's created for them. And adults love it too, because they're used to kinda playing on their phone anyway and just tracking their books. We created a hundred-and-forty-five individual book bundles for people. We did over thirteen-hundred curbside transactions in January and February mostly. For public computers, had close to eight hundred computer sessions of people coming in. We had over forty-seven-hundred instantly streamed either eBooks, audiobooks, TV shows or movies from the free library app Hoopla and Canopy, completely free with their West Bridgewater Library Card. West Bridgewater actually offers the most availability to streaming than any other library in the sales network. We had almost forty-eight thousand items checked out, and those are actually physical items that pass through our hands and into the hands of someone else during the year. And again, that was with curbside transactions, as well as when people were back in the building. We had over fifty-six-hundred eBooks and audiobooks checked out through our Libby app, another free app you can use with your library card. We have over fifty-seven-hundred active borrowers. Those are people who have registered for library cards in West Bridgewater, who have cards that aren't expired, and they've actively checked out items within the last three years. And this past year alone, we had three-hundred-and-twenty new cards made. So I just wanted to also give that as some background.
Thank you. So for the budget, if you just wanna go through the lines that you've made adjustments to?
Sure, so the top three lines, appointed official clerical salaries, assistant department head. We're asking for a two percent salary increase across the board for all positions. The line below longevity, that's a big jump, that's forty-eight percent. And I give credit to the library as being a great place to work, that people gain longevity and and stay in their positions. That number that two-hundred-nine, two-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-five would be the total request, because we need an increase for two people who are hitting their longevities at the library, their ten-year longevities, which are prorated due to their not being at the thirty-five hour a week mark. We're on par with the next two lines for heating and electricity. We don't anticipate any increases. The janitorial property maintenance, I'm asking for a fifteen percent increase, which is a fifteen-hundred-dollar increase. Why that's specifically being asked on that line is we are anticipating that we are gonna be overspending our line fifty-four-twenty, which is office supplies. So I went through with Beth Aewalt, our financial coordinator, to kinda figure out, well, what are we actually buying and attributing to office supplies that we're, we've already spent eighty-five percent of our budget for this year? And I've realized that office supply has been a catch-all for things like trashcan liners, public toilet paper, public paper towels, cleaning supplies, disinfectant, gloves, anything like that. So what I'm asking for is for fifteen-hundred dollars more to be more appropriately dispersed in the janitorial property maintenance. We hire our own janitor at the library, so we hire, we, as a part of that, we buy all of our own janitorial supplies. We do our best as workers to keep everything safe. We we wipe down all the computers after each individual use. We lysol all the bathrooms, we lysol all the tables, all of that. And in, and in my research, the past two years, we spent about fifteen-hundred dollars on those type of items. So that's why I'm asking for a fifteen-hundred-dollar increase specifically to be more properly noted in the janitorial property maintenance line. The next increase would be to technology. I got in touch with Comcast directly. Our technology line specifically is for what we pay Comcast every year. It's for Wi-Fi. We have great Wi-Fi in our building. It's something offered twenty-four hours a day in our parking lot. And the exact figure for a yearly bill from Comcast is at four-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. So we're asking for an increase of six-hundred-and-sixty-seven to to meet that. For books and periodicals, we're asking for an eight percent increase. That number is actually kinda set in stone per the Mass General Law, where our budget, in order to be eligible for state aid, it had to be our budget had to be at least a figure of the average of the last three years municipal appropriations increased by two-point-five percent. So we hit that number, and then that, it has to be exactly fifteen percent of our total budget. So that number's just set in stone. It, in order to, in order for books and periodicals, in order for that number to be fifteen percent of our total budget, it needs to be increased by eight-point-oh-four percent. And that's for us to be eligible for for state aid. The dues and meetings was the next increase I'm asking for. We have a great staff at the library, mostly our paraprofessionals, meaning those that don't have a master's degree in library science. I have my masters, Melanie has her masters. I think that our staff are incredible and that they definitely need memberships to MLA and ALA. Those are the professional library organizations. From there, you can partake in virtual conferences. You get on their email list. You can develop and network with other people with shared, you know, library experience. And also, by by us not giving them MLA membership currently, that does not give them any incentive to like wanna present at MLA. It's a huge honor to present at MLA, and I want people to have that opportunity to thrive and grow. So by increasing by five-hundred dollars, that I, Melanie and I did the math on the memberships. The memberships would be just over eleven-hundred dollars, and that would leave a little wiggle room for, you know, to send someone to an actual conference or to pay for a virtual conference, something like that. I really wanna foster the ability for professional development. And that's my thinking behind the budget.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
Nope, thank you.
Alright, that's all. Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
How are you guys?
Hi, guys, doing?
Hi.
Good, how are you?
How you doing?
Alright, so are you doing it, John, or Steve?
I'm sorry.
Are you leading or John? Who's leading? Steve? You?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please, I'm sorry.
Yeah, alright, if you just wanna start going through the lines.
Yeah. We um I'll go through if you want the lines that show an increase for FY twenty-three, or however you wanna do it. The, we know the first line, elected officials, it was that way when I started back in oh-five, so I don't know, that's gonna go up one of these years, maybe.
Probably.
Maybe not. When's the last time that was changed, you know? Any chance?
No idea.
It's probably been, you know, I bet you probably twenty years, yeah. I'm not sure. On the appointed officials, it's the line fifty-one-eleven for the principal assessor position. We're looking for a, from twenty-two to twenty-three, a two-and-a-half percent increase over the previous year, bringing that salary to ninety-thousand-six-four-five, or an increase of two-and-a-half percent in money, twenty-two-eleven.
Is that where you believe the market will call for? Because as I understand, John, you're retiring May first. So is that just what, have you done a market study, or is that just?
No, I haven't, but you know, if I do one, you won't wanna hear it, so, because you know, in the past practice, when we needed certain money, I've done some snooping around, not snooping, I, you know, the course of my business, I traveled to a lot of, you know, town halls, city halls. You know, for example, the the gentleman over in Easton making about a hundred-and-fifteen thousand. And it just goes, you know, there are some low ones, believe me, I'm starting high. But last time I started talking about this, when the first one I threw, I think was, I had a whole, we had a list of twenty of them. The first one I threw, my mistake was like hang them, and right away, they associate that with like Metro West, the high numbers, blah blah. It was the low ones and higher ones. They're kind of all over the board, but certainly that is definitely within the range, probably on the lower side. Classified community, we do some work in-house, et cetera, et cetera, but it's not too far off, believe me, you know?
Alright, the only thing on that I'd ask is if you work with Lyndon, maybe finalizing that number before the budget is adopted, in case you do need to make an adjustment for it, if it is too low or whatever, just.
We're gonna need the adjustment, is.
I mean, she's there to help you if you need to do a comparative study or anything.
Sure, yeah. Well, this is kinda like what we have now, but the the problem I have is, if John does get through or retire, whatever, I had somebody I wanted to maybe try to bring in, but not on the one-year contracts. You won't get anybody that's decent, as far as I can see, and I can, I can prove that, but but I know we don't have the time for that, but that's gonna be the holdup by a lot of people that might wanna come in here and do the job. They're not gonna come in and leave what they're doing or whatever on a one-year contract. Most of them are, you would think, the three-year deal.
We do have the ability to do that if it does go through this board, so we could.
That's not what we were told.
Am I remembering that, David? You can't sign it three-year, but we can?
That's correct.
Not sign it, but you know, adopt that so we can promise somebody or not somebody, you know, the position, because that's a huge, huge holdup. I had somebody in mind, and when I mentioned that, you know, I told him he'd be crazy to do that, because you know, you're leaving something to come here, and you know, if you do your job, you shouldn't have to worry about it, but I'm sorry, on a one-year thing, you know?
It could be done. If we were together, we could sign a three-year contract. So it is a possibility.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be known before somebody walks in and says, hi, my name is, you know, I'm interested in the job. You gotta know that upfront, so they'll come in and apply for it.
The statute is Board of Assessors have the ability to sign a one-year contract.
As of right now, right?
Right. The Board of Selectmen have the authority to sign a multi-year contract. So if you wanna appoint somebody, if you wanna, if you wanna recommend someone and do a multi-year contract, then the selectman will be the ones that would actually sign the contract and be responsible for the contract.
Could he advertise as a one-to-three-year contract? Cause I think, is that what I'm hearing, Steve? You're gonna have trouble people, getting people.
Yeah.
Attracted?
I'm not gonna be involved in that too much in my end of it, but I'm saying that the HR people have a, right, I would highly recommend. Because I know we wanna move on here, but when we hired John, two people that I personally interviewed, I know for a fact, I know them and where they went, they went to two neighboring communities, you know, in the area. There were six people that were interviewed, two people went to get jobs in other communities. Both of them didn't last six months, cause they had no clue. You get what you pay for. So you gotta, to do that, to get a person in here, where, you know, the holding hand days are over, but to do that and such, you gotta make, you know, the three-year and the best pay you can afford and stuff like that. Then you get some good candidates, maybe, you know? But two of them went elsewhere and it would let go within six months.
Okay, but we are willing to work with you on that, so.
Good, okay, yeah.
Alright.
On the clerical salaries, we're, we're looking the down in our office, we have an exceptional employee, and you know, I could go through it. We wanna move for it to just make sure. Yeah, the head secretary. And I was told that do most offices have like a head secretary in them, or some, some do, some don't, or most do?
So the union contract provides for a head principal secretary.
That's what I said.
And so I don't believe, because both of your employees are fairly recent, I don't believe that either one of them filled that role. So because the Board of Selectmen signed a collective bargaining agreement, if the assessors want to file a petition with the board, you could reclassify them from wherever they are up to a new classification.
That's what we wanna do. We definitely want, we don't wanna lose them, not that she's gonna go anywhere, but in my opinion, you know, like, as she should, cause she's paid, she does an exceptional job. And where we had the other new hire, you know, like I said a minute ago, it's a small office and a person like that is worth, worth their weight in gold. Longevity, there was an increase, there won't be if John does leave. That's the only longevity that's in the office right now. The increase on line fifty-three-oh-nine, consultant services, that's a total, the increase, we have, there's a few things that go into that. Bear with me for a second. The Patriot property contract, which amazingly or whatever, it's, it's still holding it. The actual contract for the revaluation is twenty thousand. ATV preparation and experts are six thousand, GS training is two thousand, that equals eight K. And then we put in for, which I have something I wanna, I give to you guys, take a look at before we leave. And it's come back to haunt us, and I know it would. The, we're looking for the, the money for the appraisal fee on the, on the, on the utilities. We now, we've been handed, we have a court case against us, et cetera, et cetera, as do a lot of communities. We weren't, we weren't given the money that we asked for to have a, if you would, a fee appraisal done. The law's changed, where now the, the owners with the appraising, the utilities falls on their community. Before, the the DOI used to do that. I will sit there and say right now, for sure, that's not my field of expertise, you know? I don't know too much about it. I was hoping that, at the time, we asked for it, bring somebody in and maybe try to learn a little something about it. But we have a, a case against us, and you know, there's some liability there, but by not getting that money last year, we gave a little background on it. Probably, you know, lost some growth, and that'll be litigated, and I don't know where it's gonna go with, with, when it gets adjudicated, but you know, all in all, and I'm not trying to say, you know, we, whatever, but it would've been better if we had that, but we don't, so we gotta, you know, get through it and move forward. I try to stay away from that. The personal property stuff on that, I'm not, that's not my field, so I'm hoping we can do something about that.
So you are certain, or at least, you know, very close to, that the revenue will increase by using this methodology?
Absolutely, yeah. Oh, yeah, and it's not, you know, typically on those things, it's substantial, you know, I can't say for sure. You know, going through the last so many years, but it's definitely substantial, you know?
And that's in line fifty-three-ninety-eight?
Uh, fifty-three-oh-nine.
Fifty-three-oh-nine?
I'm sorry.
Fifty-three-oh-nine.
Fifty-three-oh-nine, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Going down to contractual services, fifty-three-ninety-eight, there's an increase of seven-hundred dollars. And what was that for, John?
Patriot software license and the copy machine maintenance.
Oh, the two of those, yeah, yeah. Yeah, license is separate, and it's, there's, there's an increase as there is in the copy machine. The increase for those items is seven-hundred dollars. And down the, we have down the totals on the bottom, we're looking for the, for the twenty-three increase over twenty-two, a total of twenty-thousand-oh-sixty-nine, roughly almost eight-point-three percent. And I just, you know, with the, with what the office does for the community and such, anything that we are given as far as an increase, you know, contractual services or the clerical salaries or whatever it may be, it's money that's certainly well spent.
Thank you. Questions and comments?
So I have some questions. So I'd like to go back to line fifty-three-oh-nine.
Mm-hmm.
Is Patriot, that's Patriot Properties, all of it? Can we just go, step back a minute?
Sure. Patriot Properties, the on that total there, the, the annual contract for the revaluation work is twenty thousand dollars. And then another eight thousand dollars is preparation, we have to use some of that. Preparation for appellate tax board work, if we choose not to do it in-house. preparation for appellate tax board work, if we choose not to do it in-house. John's gone in, I've handled some of that stuff in the past, but if we have to go outside, we put into that line consultants, eight thousand dollars, I'm sorry, six thousand, I'm sorry, in GAS training, which, you know, John can fill you in on that, is another two thousand dollars for a total of eight thousand. And then the rest of that, the seventy-five hundred, we passed out that paper regarding the personal property utility appraisal. And, you know, that too, right, is, I neglect to say that, as things go, the, that price deal was an estimate based on Patriots on vendor, on maybe some type of volume discount. How many appraisals would it be?
Three.
Three, you know, so, but if you have to go out and hire JJ, one of those guys, you know, individually, you know, let's say as a fee appraisal, I'm sure just the one would be probably even more than that or right around the same. So A, it's a, it's a give-down volume deal, which is, you know, I think good in our favor. You know, B, they're familiar with the community, we have a good repertoire with them, and we think they do a pretty good job with that stuff. But, you know, I know another gentleman's got his own company, you know, would do an exceptional job, just like they would, so the people are out there, but it's not going to come cheap. So the seventy-five hundred is.
Would it be annually, or would it decrease after the first?
No, I'm not sure if it would be, Anthony. I don't know how that would work, but I would say probably not. If we get them adjudicated and level them off and, you know, and have some agreements, then it wouldn't be annually, no. It depends on how that works, works out with that.
So, so Patriot's gone up from roughly thirty thousand dollars a year, now they're up to thirty-three, two? Give or take?
Yep, the meat of that is twenty, twenty thousand dollars, that's where they are. They do a revaluation work every year. This goes on a three-year cycle, so it's sixty thousand dollars, and we pay it over three years. Eight thousand of that is away from Patriot, it's for if we need any experts to help us, you know, with informal meetings or any, any type of, you know.
Engineering costs.
Engineering, that type of stuff. And two thousand of that is for the GIS training. So in answer to your question, if you want to include, if we have Patriot do the personal property, Patriot would be seventy-five hundred dollars of that. I'm sorry, it'd be twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Sure.
But he's, just to be clear, Patriot hasn't gone up in probably eight to ten years. They've been twenty thousand.
Say eight years anyways, yeah.
Okay.
For their valuation services. Their license goes up, which is a separate line item, the one that you asked the question about, and that only goes up a couple hundred dollars a year.
But I thought when I asked Steve for a breakdown, he said twenty thousand dollars for the revale, eight thousand dollars for the preparation, and ATV.
Yeah, the preparation was what, six? And the GIS was two?
Okay, GIS is two.
Yeah.
But Patriot has remained at twenty. The other costs have gone up, and the seventy-five hundred dollars will be an additional cost in the budget this year. That's the increase that we're projecting.
So, but isn't, okay, so Patriot is twenty, who's the other eight thousand paid to? It's not paid to Patriot?
No.
I'm just repeating what Steve said. Six thousand dollars for experts for appellate tax board cases, and two thousand dollars for GIS training. So it's twenty plus six plus two, twenty-eight.
Okay.
Plus seventy-five hundred additionally this year.
Okay. I mean, because, you know, all right, so I guess I'm also trying to understand on, you know, part of their contract, and I'm questioning if we're getting the most bang for our buck with Patriot. Because part of the contract is that they're going to assist John with the LA thirteen growth report. But yet, John was here, how many hours in November on top of his regular work? Forty, how many hours of comp time, John? Forty-eight, I think it was?
But they, there's a lot of work that goes into that, you know? They run all their numbers, question numbers, to pick up, you know, the assessments, and they actually figure out the increase based on a revaluation versus, you know, maybe a building permit, do all that stuff, then John puts it together for the, to set the tax rate.
But, and I appreciate that, but, I mean, just looking at John's time in November, okay, I mean, we started out with Patriot and going full-time assessor, because we were going to save money on Patriot. That didn't happen. And now he's working just an extra thirty-six hours to get through the, the growth rate, the tax rate. And I'm trying to understand, are we getting our, you know, why, why, what's going to, John, you're going to retire May?
May one.
May one. Are you going to actually retire in May one, or are you going to leave soon or reuse your comp time?
That's, that's a matter of discussion.
Okay, the reason I ask, Steve, again, is we're going, we're going to be seeking to hire another assessor, and, I mean, do we need an assessor and a half, because we're not getting what we expected to get from Patriot?
No, to be clear, Patriot does analytical work. I do the preparation for the package that is presented in your classification hearing. As you know, I had it very difficult medically last year. So as you may or may not know, I had two surgeries. They put all of the work behind, building permits, data entry for the Department of Revenue forms. So the forty-eight hours that I worked in November were catching up and doing work that I would have done for a classification hearing in July or September or October. But I was unable to, because I was on, you know, it's on medical leave. That's what's extraordinary about this year.
Oh, okay.
I want to add something else, too. When you make a statement that we're not getting the most bang for our buck from Patriot, we most certainly are, because we just stated a minute ago, the bulk of that contract for the actual revaluation work hasn't gone up in eight years, because John's negotiated it down, you know, if you check, make your calls for other communities or I could, you're going to see some type of CPI increase or something. Here it's remained at twenty grand over the last, you know, eight years or so. So from that, from that standpoint, we most certainly have, you know, got the most out of that we, that we think we could.
Okay, so.
I'd probably say ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
All right.
Absolutely, yeah.
So do you have a, so just so I understand where we're heading here, so there were a lot of hours in November, and we've got to think about budgets and where we're going with this, but you say at forty-eight hours of comp time in November, so you don't have any other comp time on the books, this is it?
Some in December, some in January, some in July, August and September.
I thought you weren't here in July and August.
Some. Not like, not like November.
All right, so do we have a number on the accrued comp time to date? An estimate?
I'm working on it this month, to wrap that all up before I retire.
So, I mean, that's problematic, John, because we have a form that was submitted to everyone, so we could know what our liability is. But this isn't, the form I was given isn't the form the town created. There's no space here for accrued liability, so we don't, accrued comp time.
That's from, that's from the form that you adopted.
This is our form? No?
I didn't come up to debate that. If you would like to have a discussion, I'll be happy to have a discussion.
Okay, so we, but we need to have that number, so we can understand what our liability is.
And I've been in touch with HR.
Excuse me?
I've been in touch with HR.
Okay.
And Linda knows the numbers are coming.
But I want it from HR, I have a right to that.
Of course you do.
And I, I want it.
And you don't have it.
The, let's see here. That was, but I want that number, and I'd like it soon, please. I, we need to know what our liability is.
I was hoping that I would have it today, but you will have it this week.
Thank you. I mean, Steve, do you have any idea what it is? Because you've been signing off on it, right?
Yeah, I don't.
You don't?
Questions, comments?
Go. What's up?
All right, thank you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, public comment period. Anything from the public? All right, well, that's all we have then. So I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session for purposes of conducting a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically all non-union contractual employees under the direction of the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
On the favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes.
Kenahan, yes.
You should, right, huh?